Okay, I'd like to call the Lummester planning board to order for May 16th, 2020 at 6:30. We have a 6:30 hearing, continued public hearing for city competition 2022. Our overflow lots to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to parking of unregistered vehicles.
That's mine. I've been, I've been, I've been.
You've been busy.
So, so we're going to just continue this, make a motion to continue this. We had a nice subcommittee meeting with all the department heads and we had some good discussion. It's just, we still need a few things and we'll, we'll work on it this weekend.
Do you want to do it June 20th?
Do you want to set up another?
That way we have time to have us to be in and have a subcommittee.
Do you want to have another subcommittee meeting to finalize a few things?
Yes, Elizabeth and I didn't sit down and, you know, we needed a couple of definitions and we needed a few other little things.
So June 20th at 6:30?
Yeah, we'll do it June 20th and then we'll do another subcommittee meeting before that as well.
Okay.
If that's your motion, I'll say.
That's my motion.
I have a motion made and seconded, moved to June 20th at 6:30. Do I have any discussion on that? If you're not, I'll go for a vote. All people say aye.
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 Most say no. Motion carries.
No.
No roll call.
Thanks John, that was a lot of fun.
Okay, we can go into the regular meeting. Call to order, roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Yes, here.
South Chacone.
Here.
Carbitorioso.
Here.
John Souza.
Here.
Tom Cargan, excused. Jason Perez.
Here.
Steve Vayer.
Here.
Okay, last 21st minutes.
I move to approve the, that's Martin Point first.
Second. I have a motion made and seconded. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections? If you're not, I'll call for the vote. All people say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries.
And again, I move to approve the May 2nd meeting.
We're gonna have to make one amendment though. Carol was not here and absent at the same time. She was absent, so I have to.
That'd be, that'd be quite something.
Not after, excused.
Excused.
Excused. So which is it?
I was excused on May 2nd.
Yeah.
I was here on March 1st.
May 2nd, she's got here.
Yeah, but look on the other side, member's present.
Oh.
I'm listed twice.
Oh, you've been here twice.
No, I'm.
All right, so with that, with that amendment?
With that amendment to correct the attendance, do I have any, any other additions or deletions? If you're not, I'll call for the vote. All people say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. And our potential street map, 437, parcel 2.
It's a big map for a very small lot.
Yes, it is. Because I think on the map, the most attached.
I think I'm getting paid in chicken piccata.
That sounds good. Not thinking chicken piccata.
Good evening, everybody. JB Rawls from Halymore. And my client this evening is Mr. Ricky Degno of Otono. Be prepared to say an outland for Ricky, but a subdividing land that abuts the Otono is owned by Chapman Place. And we're creating lot number one out of Chapman Place. Lot one has 26,773 square feet, about 0.61 acres, with a frontage of 144.87. This land, this lot number one, is going to be conveyed to an annex with a budding property owned by Ricky Degno. It's going to create one lot. The zone residency, minimum lot, lot area is 8,000 square feet, and the frontage is 50 feet. And, but it's important to know that Chapman Place has a remaining lot area, 20, 25 acres plus, and 734 feet plus of remaining lot frontage. So it's compliant with zoning. In the director's report, there were two issues that she wanted us to address. We had, I believe we addressed both of them to her satisfaction. The first one was, she wanted us to dimension the abutting property owned by the Otono. So we put distances from the building to the lot lines. And the second question was, how many remaining acres, and how many units, and upland area remaining. I believe we answered those in a letter to Elizabeth. But the upland area calculation ended up being 23.37 acres, and there are 197 condos in Chapman Place. So hopefully we answered that to her satisfaction and to the board's satisfaction. And we asked the board to endorse the amount.
Thank you. I looked at it, that was a question I had for the Chapman Place, if they had sufficient open space still out of, and they do. So with that, I thought, looks like it's a pretty good thing, and they can make more chicken piccata. You want to add something?
Yeah, I'm representing Chapman Place, I'm the property, Jerry Zimmerman, I'm the property manager at Chapman Place. My approach, Richard, Rick approached me, and we went to the board, and we went through all the process with Chapman Place. We had to get 75% of the people to agree with it. We got over 80. I think it was only like three people that didn't agree with it. But I think they didn't know where the spot was, because it's well hidden to be on our tennis court. It's out of the way, it's not impeding anybody. So we went through our process, and everybody at Chapman agreed it was good to pick them. They all wanted chicken piccata.
Is that part of the deal?
At least for me it is. They all asked for it, but they're 197 to the door, I don't know. But Chapman Place did approve this whole process.
Okay. You brought it up. Good, great. Always concerned about homeowners associations, I look like that.
I move to endorse.
Second. I have a motion made and seconded to endorse. Do I have any further discussion with this?
I just want, Rick Degno, I just want to publicly thank Gary Zimmerman for his help, because it was overwhelming to try to get at least 75 people in a condo association to approve this. So he was stellar. He was just really, really a wonderful guy to work with. He really pushed this through so publicly, just on the conversation.
I don't have something to kind of get him.
I appreciate what you're saying, because I go to Florida, and I own homeowners association, and I own the committee down there, and there's 900 units there. And so I know what he has to go through to get something done.
I'm even surprised they did, because they did it once or twice for getting extra parking. It's a lot of work. We had some of all the crews going around too, and there's people that give a lot of grief on certain things.
But yes.
In this case, they all, mostly, no mean spirited people, and it worked out well.
That's good, well, thank you. And that was, whenever I see, you know, cooperation like that, it's good for the city, and it's also, I think it's a reflection on the city, of people working together. Thank you again.
Martin's trying to blow his leaves on the water property.
Yeah. With that, I'll go for it, and all the people say aye. Vote say no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You all say aye.
Hi, good to see you.
And I'll be there tomorrow night, at 6:30.
No, no, Thursday's for lunch.
Oh, Thursday's for lunch, okay.
But Friday's.
Thursday's chicken piccata. And I walk in, I do a 3D model, and says, chicken piccata, you know, don't look up at me.
All right.
Okay, and our Wilder Road, Lummester, 1 o'clock avenue, Lunenburg, map, map, 14, parcel 9.
This may look familiar to you.
We saw it last week.
Yes.
Record, for the record building engineer, during this parcel, the building was in front of you at the last meeting. And since that time, the, at some point, we had created the garage parcels.
I looked at it.
And the owner wanted to maintain that garage. Once he, once he started explaining to him about the status of Geraldine, and how, and the process of how to get that up to snuff for an additional lot, the feeling is that the likelihood of them going through that process with the planning board for, for extra lot probably was not what they really wanted to anyways, and probably wasn't working. So what they did was they reduced, the lot line was back in, you know, here. Before we pulled the lot line up forward, and we carved out the land here around the garage, so that he would be able to own the garage, which he, he's playing on using for his own use anyways. So this will allow him to basically sell the front house, maintain the garage, and build his own house up towards the lake.
Was that Dr. Stowe's house, Stowe?
No idea.
Okay.
No idea?
I think that was. Just remembering. Yeah. Okay. So it makes a nice lot, and it's not built with a lot of stuff, but Lunenburg, that gives day of all the long driveway.
So actually, I should say that the frontage for Lunenburg for this lot is required to be at 50 feet, and they double, it's normally 100, but they, you go half the frontage, you double the area, and they allow you with the reduced frontage. So that's how that lot will work. And that is not a buildable lot in Lummester, but has the area in frontage required for the house in Lunenburg, that's what would be built. And the votes were moved now in the public way of Wilder.
So both. I'm just concerned about.
So that would be their driveway.
Correct.
Land number two. Okay.
I move to endorse.
Yes, second.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded. Do I have any other questions? If you're not, I'll call for the vote. All people say aye. Vote say no. Motion carries. And our 140, Lincoln Street, map 563, lot 3, and 15A.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Brian Rashady, Maffaty Engineering. Here tonight on behalf of DBC Development, Jimmy Jares, for subdivision of this land on the corner of Lincoln Street and Wildflower. Was here a few months ago for the same piece of property. We subdivided the three lots that fronted our Lincoln Street. Because there was a piece of property, its triangular, trapezoidal in shape, was a sliver along Wildflower, that we weren't able at the time to identify nor to contact them at all. Acquiring that piece as well in order to develop the real lot, which was lot 3, as approved back in November, December. So, we said to the owner, it was Jimmy Jares. So, did you see there, along the frontage of Wildflower, there are, we were able to break that parcel up into four pieces, and combine it with the two blank, two and a quarter acres or so, divide that of what used to be lot 3, which this plan will now, in combining those lots, give us three more buildable lots and then one unbuiltable lot on the northern edge, that we don't have an acquired lot, lot length, and due to impasse because of weapons, the 80 years to just subdivide that piece, and is going to look to just sell and give it to one of the abutters that lives off of, off of them. So, so lot 3A would be combined with 3B, which is the sliver along Wildflower. Lot 4A would be combined with 4B. 5A would be combined with, 5A is 5B, and then the same, same 6B. So all those lots would give us an acquired, frontage or acquired lot length, providing it exceed the acquired lot area.
Is parcel 3A small?
So 3A is the large, the larger parcel here.
Right.
So this is combined with this 3B sliver.
Oh, okay.
What was that? Does that have changed? 2178?
So this one is 21372, plus, yeah, in combined, makes.
And then another 592.
I'll catch you.
Okay.
Yeah. So in the way it's written on the bottom of these, they're combining those two lots. But because they're separate owners, we didn't merge them yet, because the deal hasn't been made.
So they opened up, opened up three more lots, so.
He gets, he gets two more, two more buildable lots.
Two more buildable lots, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I move to endorse.
I have a motion made, and a motion made and seconded to endorse. Do I have any questions, others? If you're not, I'll call for the vote. All people say aye. Vote say no. Motion carries. Yeah, I'm just waiting for them to get. Well, Elizabeth's working right, double duty today. Okay, goes that 3.4. A deviation from approved subdivision plan, South Cape Business Park, map 503, parcels 3 through 12, lot 10, Technology Drive.
All right.
You say that again, right?
Mr. Hanigan is here, he can probably speak to us. But basically, the applicant's wanting to vacate Technology Drive and incorporate it into another lot, a nearby lot, to give it frontage on Research Drive. And because it's a subdivision, we have to notify abutters. And so when you think about scheduling it, I'm thinking when you out to June 20th, so that I can advertise.
To make it short story long.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So.
For the record, it's January 23rd.
When we did that, I did a record bill handing, handing engineering with Tom Gavensi, the attorney for the applicant developer. The road, Technology Drive, was on land, so Jim Barry, Jim, Whitney Barry, Cassini, had a good portion of land, and they bought a piece from Brian War out of Sterling, cut along the Sterling line, added that, and then they worked on original subdivision with Bruce Warler. Okay, Bruce has since passed away, and there's no, there's no agreement between the two on passing and repassing over the other one's lane. That in combination with, there's really only, there's one big lot left at the end. They've sold everything off except, I think, maybe two or three lots at this point in time. So there's, the purpose of building the road doesn't exist anymore. So if we eliminate that section of the road that's on Barry and Tim's property, then we take that portion of the land, merge it with lot 10, create lot 10A, and then we come back, and that, that lot would then have frontage on the public way of Research Drive. So we need to be built.
So the original plan of running Technology out to Willis. Willis Street is, is no avoidant.
Right, so the process of eliminating the roadway piece from a, from a title perspective, is to go through the amended subdivision process to eliminate the road. So we don't really, I know Elizabeth sent me a note saying, you know, are you going to ask for waivers? But we really don't need any waivers, because we're not asking, we're not asking to construct it.
Right.
Okay, but what we're asking to do is to have the planning board agree that this portion of the roadway is no longer an approved way, becomes basically regular land, and then we can merge it with the other plan, with the other lot. If we were an A and R plan, you endorse that. We may want to even have that endorsement under the subdivision control law, to kind of wrap the loop around the process.
That didn't get approved when the city approved the.
Except the city? No.
No, okay. That was the only thing I was concerned that, when they had done it, that it was tied in.
The last piece that was accepted was the cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac.
Which we had pulled down when we built Process Coolin'.
Right.
Okay. So this is really the last, the road would end here.
Right.
Lot 10, or 10 or 10A, whatever we would end up calling it, is going to end. That would be a driveway to that one lot. There's already a person that we're working with on a site plan that bring that in. The lot next to it, we're working on a site plan for that, that is frontaged down on Research Drive as well. And we're just going to call today for another one of the lots. So there's at least three, maybe four projects that are going to be coming in this, this summer, to almost complete the project.
Oh, that's great, yeah. When we see a project come through and start to get close to completion.
Yep.
We start where we always.
One's already accepted, the road's already accepted, we don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, yeah, the road's accepted. Well, that was a P-Wed, right?
Here.
All right, so I have to schedule the public hearing?
If I may, there is enough time to advertise for the June 6th meeting, because we have three Mondays between now and then.
If I get an ad out this week.
Right, so we could advertise next Monday and the following Monday at the end time for the June 6th. But the reason that I'm trying to do that is because we're on the timelines of due diligence for getting the site plan stuff submitted and approved beforehand.
Will June 6th be okay?
June 6th would be okay for this, because once we, once the board approves it, if we have to file that with the city clerk, and then there's a 10, a 20-day period. Okay, and so what we're trying to do is, we're trying to line up the submission of the site plan, so it will be submitted, plan submitted on June 6th for the site plan, and do our site plan review on the 20th. By the time we get that done, the approval process of the, of the roadway and appeal process will be done. So hopefully in, in July, it can be good to go with construction. That's kind of what we're trying to hit.
Okay. Yeah, no, if I see construction, I see it happening. Now, like I said, I was just concerned with the provisional P-Wed, and that that wasn't infringing, and, and then that doesn't go out to Willis, which I think will make, make all the people on Willis.
We got, we got some comments from, a couple of projects that have come through from the police department, saying that they don't want it, the road ever connected.
Yeah, well, that, originally, there was, there was, there was some pushback on that at the time, but we'll see, we'll see what happens in the future. So this is actually working out better. Okay, so the motion would be in order to schedule a meeting for the 6th, right?
So.
We don't have anything else on the 6th, though.
But which, are we starting, is that the day we're starting the 6th?
We're starting at 6, but we're doing a check presentation at 6.
Oh, okay, so 6:30.
So, that's, it's 6:30.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded for June 6th at 6:30. Any further discussion? If you're not, I'll call for the vote. All people say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
4.1 has been continued. Build new business, communications. About 375,000 square foot warehouse proposed on Airport Road, Lunenburg-Fishburg line. Just so to, I put the, the three drawings together, so they made sense, but we got a lot back in, okay.
Chris was kind enough to provide me.
You know, and, I don't know, do I have a representative here?
Just someone hanging around.
So maybe you guys play, what's going on?
Can't get, can't get engineering. Yeah, we're doing this project for TFI Group of Austin. It's a 370,000, maybe a little bit less, square foot warehouse to do design. It is a, what's known as a speculative building package. So they're going through, and they're going to get it permitted, build it, and then lease it out. Sometimes, we're doing about five of these right now across the state. So sometimes these buildings go up, and they end up with one tenant. Sometimes they go in, and they end up with three tenants. I haven't seen one with more than three. So there's sufficient loading docks, parking for the various uses of various potential tenants. Some of the parking, the parking is pretty much spread around one side of the building, the docks are all on the backside. There's a full circular loop for traffic control. In this particular project, there's going to be two main entrances off of Prophet Street Airport Road. So one, the one towards, towards Lummester, if you will, that's going to be truck only. So the trucks will go in and out of that one. And the one that's like right against the National River, that one's going to be vehicle, passenger vehicle only. So the trucks will go in that road, they'll go to the loading dock here, and they'll come out that same drive, and the same thing with the passenger vehicles. They'll go into the.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're going to push all the truck traffic on Prophet into 13?
We haven't done the traffic study, but a gut feeling is that's probably where it's going to end up going. But the traffic study, I shouldn't say we haven't done, the traffic study is underway. It's being, it would be, it was supposed to be finalized by May 1st. They're now telling us May 20th, they'll have the traffic study done. That's going to get submitted to both Pittsburgh and Lunenburg. Lunenburg is kind of yielded to Pittsburgh on the review, because it's really more of an impact to Pittsburgh Road. So they're going to have, I think, I think Ty and Bond, or one of those companies will be reviewing both our site plan and the traffic plan to basically make sure that everyone agrees with what's happening. Okay?
Yeah, because I think that, I think the traffic impact is going to be Lummester. You know, Route 13. And when I looked at it, and I see, and I read that, I said, running that traffic on Prophet Street, you know, you get, you get 350 or 390, you know, parking places, but, you know, the, everything is the, when I saw that this is the terminal.
Yep.
You're going to have a lot of trucks.
Right.
And the impact of 13 is, is going to be tough.
Right, so we'll wait for the traffic study to come back. I, I don't know if they've gone as far as 13 is there in their review. Because, probably did, because that's the next major intersection. So you'd have Bemis Road on one end, and Route 13 on the other. And they typically, I mean, you can, you'll hit Benson Street up to Route 12.
Up 12.
I know, but I mean, I, I don't know what the scope of the traffic study is. And once we get that back, we're going to kind of get it to the meat of it with, with the city of Pittsburgh and.
Yeah, I could see the traffic going off Benson. You know, but, and to 12, but that's, that's not a good road either.
Right, I, I see it probably going more to 13, and then out to 190, crossing, you know. That's, that just, you know, having lived in the area and knowing what happens with traffic, that's what's got me mind-stuck. The interesting thing is that the Amazon that approved in Pittsburgh, and you never notified it.
No, we never did.
And this, this came from Lunenburg, correct?
Right.
Yeah, because Adam's good like that, he'll, he'll tell everybody, know what's going on. So we've reviewed the traffic report for the Amazon, and the way that they operate is the, the trucks come in during, during the typical truck hours, okay? You know, morning, noon, late night, whatever. But the vans, they don't start leaving the property until around 10 o'clock in the morning. So they miss the morning peak, okay? And then they don't come back until like 7 o'clock at night. So they miss the evening peak. That's how they are, they took their operations and they just rotated it. I guess, which makes sense, you know, that's what they do it. So that's why, that's why, maybe that's why you don't get your Amazon deliveries until 10 o'clock.
Oh, let's see. I guess, yeah, it's about that time. Because I was in Greenville, my grandson's graduation, from Clemson. And we hit a stoplight, and there must be an Amazon warehouse up the road. And at that stoplight, there was one car and 14 Amazon trucks, the delivery trucks. And that was about moon time, you know, stuff like that.
So I don't, I don't have much more to share aside from, because I don't have the traffic information myself. But I'm sure that Pittsburgh and Lummester and Lunenburg are all going to be looking at this.
Yeah. So where, this is, this is general information for us.
Right.
And then Lunenburg has a meeting on the 23rd. Okay?
Right.
Maybe, I don't know.
Do you want me to request the traffic study?
Well, definitely.
Yeah.
We want, we want to have a copy, a copy of that traffic study and have an option to look at it anyway.
Yeah, so we have already, we were, I think we had a meeting with Pittsburgh scheduled for the 23rd, or something like that of May. And we've already continued that to the June meeting, because we don't have the traffic study yet either. So when we get the traffic study. So when we get the traffic study, you know, I can't give it to you unless my client says to give it to you. But I don't think that they're going to have a hard, hard time because it's public information. You know, very honestly why they wouldn't just, you know, and we'll go from there, see what they come up with.
Do we put a request in for you, through you to get that? Or do we do it through Lunenburg?
I think if Elizabeth could contact Michael Harris at, at Pittsburgh, the Fitz, Pittsburgh, city of Pittsburgh is going to be doing a more comprehensive review of Lunenburg because there's no roads in Lunenburg.
Right.
You know, so I think that might be the proper, proper channel. Or let's say, you know, when, when, when the traffic study is available, we'd like to see.
We're on Bernie's, he'll have it as well.
Yeah, he'll have it, we're going to review it, but yeah.
So what recourse do we have?
It's, it's information, well, when we get to the traffic study, we can, we have input to it, okay?
You have non-binding.
And non-binding and we can go to, and we can go to Pittsburgh and Lunburg and the Pittsburgh primarily thing. You know, can you make these requests and accommodations? Let's, let's just, but before I say that, it's, you know, let's find out what we get before we make any judgments. And see what they come up with, okay? But it's, the concern I have is with the heavy trucks, I'm coming back into that Nashwood Street, coming back on to Route 13 and that intersection, it's already a tough location.
And I don't, I mean, I don't know the truck, traffic patterns for these types of uses. But I would presume most of them would just cross Route 13. But there probably will be some that head north on Route 13, Route 13 to get up to New Hampshire. Get to Route 2, you know.
Yeah. It's one road. It's an industrial zone.
Yeah.
There's a transfer station there, there's other warehouses, I mean.
Yeah.
We don't have to like it, but it, you know.
Well, it's been there, but, you know.
Well, and the, and the other thing is that I, I'd be curious, I'd be curious to see what's the traffic engineer, is taking, not changing, actually made on Route 13 right now as part of their, part of analysis.
Yeah.
To see whether they're looking at that timing, those lights, parts they're doing. So I'm not really sure how, where that stands right now, I know it's being constructed, but, you know.
Okay, I'm sure the state would be interested too. All right, okay. Thank you for the information, Elizabeth will get, get something off to Pittsburgh. And we'll try to stay on top of this and have a little bit of input and hope, you know. So thank you.
Your email said you're out until the 21st.
I am.
I can't hear this here.
You came here for yourself. You came here for yourself.
Did I?
Yeah. Planning and development directors report.
Okay, I sent, I sent out an email, I sent out an email earlier to everybody, but I'm hoping you can all make it on June 6th at 6:00. Because we're going to have the check presentation from Brooks Pond for Ford New York Field. And I'm going to try to get them past the mayor's, supposed to come, and it'll be a good fiddle up.
Are we going to pose with the, the John Deere tractor?
We're supposed to get a giant tractor made. No tractor.
They couldn't get the tractor up the elevator.
No, and then the other good news we have is we're getting an intern from yours in New Hampshire, he's going to start on Monday, next Monday.
Okay.
So we'll keep him busy.
Great.
Yeah, nice, he's a senior and his name is Cooper Matthews.
So the next meeting is at 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, oh, well, now that we confirmed that, yes, it is the 6.
We have to confirm that, we have a motion for that.
Perhaps America can present us with our statement checks as well, it'll be a nice time.
Yeah, well, well.
Oh, yes, I need to do that, I need to make the reminder.
We're, we're second to be helped here.
I'll take it's just a smaller reminder.
The, the check presentation is going to be right in here.
Oh, okay.
That was the easiest way to do it so that I can get everybody here.
So, so what, is the check presentation part of our meeting or part of the meeting?
It's part of the meeting.
It can be, it can be something that's not part of the meeting, it doesn't have to be on the agenda.
The meeting is still at 6:30.
So the meeting is still at 6:30, so. So the meeting is, does, yeah, that's a good, okay.
So there's no, no, check presentation does not go on the agenda, it's just a.
Okay, we should start earlier than we started, because the presentation will take five minutes and then we're going to sit around.
It'll be a coffee and donuts.
I'll talk to Johnny, I'll talk to Johnny over here.
Unless you want me to, unless you want me to make the meeting earlier, then we can take a motion.
Then we have to let Bill know, because then, don't we have him at 6:30?
We do.
He's already at 6:30.
Keep him at 6:30.
Yeah.
Meeting's at 6:30, although the presentation's at 6, so that's 15 minutes, we'll be 15 in there.
So everyone show up late for the check.
Yeah.
Well, the mayor, mayor has to run to the school committee at 6. So he's going to come here first and then go to the school committee, that's why we had to do it that way.
Okay.
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 All right.
Anything else?
Executive session?
Oh, executive session.
All right, motion good.
All right, mess yourself. Motion dead, all favors aye?
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.